Looks like we're at our 10:30, 6.4. A, an update on 2022 drought conditions, Lake County, California, and B, updates from drought-related meeting groups, including the Comprehensive Drought Work Group, the Drought Emergency Operations Center, the Lake County Drought Task Force, and the Tree Mortality Task Force. And it looks like we have Deputy Del Giannis here, and I will hand this off to you.
Awesome. Good morning. Thank you so much, Board. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for having me this morning. I do have a presentation, and I'm going to share my screen with you all. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Great. All right. So Marina Del Giannis, Deputy Water Resources Director. I am here to give you an update on current drought conditions for our Lake County community. And with that being said, I have a few talking points. So when it comes to drought, there's a lot that we can cover. I know we have roughly 30 minutes, and we're going to be hearing from a few people. So I just want to set the stage for what we're going to be talking about today. So again, I'm going to be doing an overview of our current statewide drought conditions. I will be sharing information on our current and predicted Clear Lake and Lake levels. Then we will shuffle on over to the status of any open and closed Clear Lake public boat ramps. I'm going to do an overview of our current work groups that we have. We have a few work groups that are highlighting and discussing droughts throughout our community. So I'm going to do an overview of those work groups. I would like to focus our today's discussion on SB 552, which is a new requirement from the state, and then, of course, providing any resources from the county and the state. So with that here, I have a few graphics available, and this is from, these resources are from the NOAA and the USDA. All this is public information, and I will have information available. If folks want to have this information on their own, they can feel free to reach out to us, and I can provide you the link. Or you can just Google "US drought monitor conditions" from NOAA, and you can highlight and funnel in on wherever you want to look at, whether it be the greater country as a whole, or focus on our Western US here. So you can see the current status of our drought conditions in Lake County. We are in severe drought conditions. And then, looking at the precipitation that we've seen, you can highlight, you can see here, Lake County, if you guys can see my cursor. We are much below average precipitation as of March 2022. So again, we are entering a third consecutive drought year. We can anticipate that although pressing our fingers, we get a few more inches of rain, getting some rain down the drain, we're not going to be getting that much more going into the drier months here. So here, I have a graph of our current Clear Lake conditions, lake conditions. So the following assumptions were made. If no precipitation affecting the lake levels were received in March, again, we received some rain last night. It was really nice to hear on my window panes, but we did not receive as much as we are looking for. Evaporation in March is not accounted for, and the trend is reflecting the evaporation losses of year 2021. So with this graph, we have a few lines here that I would like to highlight. So this blue dotted line here, this is looking at the stage in 1977. And then we have the gray line here that is reflecting in 2014. And then this yellow line here, that shows the stage of 2021. And you can see some of these highlights of where the stage of our lake is. This is measured in our Rumsey gauge, where these stages are at, and these any given points. So we highlighted a few of those to folks to easily see. And then we also have the predicted stage of 2022. Again, this is just a prediction, looking at the current trends that we have been seeing and looking at to see where we can get an idea of where we may be in the future. So if we shuffle on over to October 17th, again, this is just a prediction, looking at negative 3.2 Rumsey. Again, only a prediction. And this map, this graphic was created earlier last week. So you can see that on March 11th, we were at .48 Rumsey. Now, folks do have access to get the lake levels Monday through Friday, if you are interested in receiving those daily lake levels. And it also shares where we were at currently last year. You can send us an email at water/resources@lakecountyca.gov, and we can put you on that listserv. We also have the daily anticipated forecast for today, and then moving forward to the rest of the week, when we do share those lake levels. So now I'd like to shimmy on over to our boat ramps that are currently open. So as you can see here, here are the current, Lake County and city maintained ramps. Here is the depth at the end of the ramp. We collected these measurements last summer. So we were able, and we showed how we were able to collect those measurements of where the end of that ramp is. And then the current ramps that are closed right now are Lucerne Harbor and Keeling Park. All right. So looking at the current Lake County drought work groups, we have a few here. The two at the top, right here, the first one is the 2021 Drought EOC. And then I also have below each graphic who initiated that group. So the Lake County EOC was initiated by County OES, so the Operation Emergency Services. So the 2021 Drought EOC meets monthly. I believe that's still the case, but any board members, please correct me if that is incorrect. So representatives from local tribal governments, the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, the state and county OES, so including Special Districts Administration, Public Services, Public Works, Water Resources, and Agriculture. It's just a roundtable discussion, sharing any updates and foster situational awareness of projects and other key information regarding our county drought. So again, that group was developed by our county OES. Now, moving over to the Lake County Comprehensive Drought Planning Work Group. And then I will say that I did switch these two around. So the Lake County Comprehensive Drought Planning Work Group was initiated by the Board of Supervisors. So I will make this modification to the final slideshow, and then I can share that with the Board of Supervisors. And we will also have this presentation on our Water Resources website. So this group was developed by, it's a board-appointed committee, which was approved on October 5th of 2021. So this work group is in the development phase. We've had one meeting, and we are, I'm anticipating that we'll have further conversations today. So it anticipated that representatives from the Board of Supervisors and county departments, such as Special Districts, Public Works, Water Resources, Public Health, Agriculture, Air Quality, OES, Environmental Health, Community Development Department, and Public Services, will contribute and discuss the drought and how it's currently affecting our Lake County community, and next steps in terms of how we can do comprehensive drought planning. Now, the Lake County Drought Task Force, that was initiated by the California Department of Water Resources and Civic Spark AmeriCorps Fellows. So this group has been meeting for a little over a year. The Civic Spark Fellows that did develop this group are no longer serving. They have graduated from this fellowship, but we are still meeting on a monthly basis. And this was, again, developed by the California Department of Water Resources. So we have friends from DWR who participate in these monthly discussions. And basically, what we do is we just share resources. We have a lot of water purveyors. We have tribal representatives. We have city, state, and county representatives also in this work group. We talk about any funding, any projects that are going on, and basically just next steps in terms of how we can do proper outreach and education in drought, anticipating that we will continue on with drought in the near and far future moving forward. So some highlights and accomplishments of this current drought group is this past year, we were able to get some funds at a side, and we did some outreach. You may have seen some posters and billboards, and some of our Lake County Transit with outreach and education regarding conserving water. So even though we're not in a drought year, it's still important for folks to conserve water. All right. So moving on over to SB 552, this is Senate Bill 552, which focuses on the water shortage planning for small water suppliers and counties. So basically, how this group, how this Senate bill was developed, it follows its sister Assembly Bill 1668, which was passed in 2018. So AV 1668 is the Water Management Planning Law. So this bill required that the State Water Resources Control Board, in coordination with the Department of Water Resources, adopt long-term standards for the efficient use of water, as provided, and performance measures for commercial, industrial, and institutional water use on or before June 30th, 2022. So with this, the state focused on a few different areas, and then they therefore developed SB 552, which is what I'm going to be talking about here in the next few slides, which was passed in 2021. So during the whole process of AV 1668, the California Department of Water Resources, also referred to as DWR, focused on different small water systems and rural communities, also referred to as CDAG, Risk Scoring and Tools. So with this assessment, they looked at different communities and identified different risks in small water systems and rural communities as it relates to drought. With this CDAG and this Risk Scoring Tool, they developed recommendations on how to cover them with water shortage contingency plans. From this tool, again, they developed SB 552. I have the link here to the Senate bill, which I will not be reading word for word. But folks are able to explore that Senate bill and all the requirements. Again, this is still a work in process, and we are getting routine updates and resources and assistance from the state on how we can make sure that we follow all the protocol as outlined in the Senate bill. So the next few slides, I was able to borrow from our friends with the California Department of Water Resources. Again, we are in routine conversations regarding SB 552. Our direct point of contact, Julie Ekstrom, with California Department of Water Resources, participates in every one of our drought task force work group discussions, which again, we meet on the second Thursday of every month. And here we have information on how SB 552 is broken down. So with SB 552, they look at small water systems, and then they also look at counties. So it outlines requirements that small water systems are supposed to do, and same with counties. And they also put it on responsibilities that the state is supposed to do as required by SB 552. So small water system, less than 1,000 connections are supposed to a bridged water shortage plan. And then small water systems with over 1,000 connections do ERP and drought supply assessments. Now, a lot of our small water, a lot of our water purveyors throughout the counties, again, they participate in these work groups, and they are well aware what they're supposed to do. And a lot of them are actually ahead of the game in doing what we're supposed to do. And again, with this assistance and support, whether it be from grant funding, and then also just the support from our friends at the state. Now, the counties, we are supposed to develop a drought task force and water shortage contingency plan. So two-pronged effort here. And basically, this supports homes on private supplies and state smalls, which is less than 15 connections. Other requirements that are outlined in SB 552, so water supply condition annual reporting, and infrastructure upgrades as standard for drought resilience. Now, when it comes to the state, they understand that they are given these requirements to make sure that we can sustainably manage our water supplies in current and future drought years. They set responsibilities from themselves. So again, again, they are tasked with, they tasked themselves with providing planning and data support tools. So they have some tools and resources that they have shared with us, and that they are constantly updating and providing for us, including regularly update drought risk assessment and tools, which again, everyone has access to. And then a standing interagency task force. So with this interagency task force, they have established a task force to consider all water user types and develop ways to improve coordination. So with this, that was one reason why these AmeriCorps Civic Spark Fellows developed the Comprehensive Drought Work Group with our Lake County community. And again, as developed by DWR, we have a direct point of contact who is helping us get the understanding of SB 552, what our requirements are, what are these resources that we can take advantage of to make sure that not only are we fulfilling these requirements as outlined by the Senate bill, but also to make sure, again, that we are sustainably managing our water resources. So now I would like to just highlight again SB 552 as it relates to small water supplies. Because again, they have it broken down into small water supplies and then counties. So in terms of small water supplies, they are tasked with developing a water shortage contingency plan. I know a lot of our water purveyors have already developed that and are in the process of developing that. And then these requirements also outline how they need to develop this water shortage contingency plan. And then they also, of course, have annual reporting requirements that they need to fulfill as well. Now, in terms of our drought requirements of SB 552, with the counties, again, we are tasked with establishing a standing drought task force or a similar alternative. Again, the county did develop a board-appointed Comprehensive Drought Work Group, so that task force would fulfill the obligations of SB 552. Now, with that, if we were to successfully fulfill the obligations of SB 552, there are certain requirements and deliverables that this drought task force would have to accomplish. And again, we have the support from the state. Now, on top of developing a standing drought task force or a similar alternative, we are also tasked with developing a drought and water shortage plan. Now, with next steps of SB 552, again, small water suppliers are tasked with drought planning contacts, triggering mechanisms and levels for actions, and developing water shortage mitigation, response, customer communications, enforcement, and relief actions that align with the water shortage levels that they are seeing in their systems. Counties' next steps for us is to develop, establish a standing drought task force, which we have done, and develop a water and shortage plan. Now, next steps for the state, again, continue engagement and outreach with counties, and develop resources and guidance in compliance with SB 552, which they are actively doing. Here, I would like to highlight a few resources that we have. This is a collection of not only county resources, but also state, and then other resources as provided by other groups around the state. So one being the RCAC, which is a low-interest loan. All of these resources are here on our Water Resources website. We are in the process of developing a drought hub, per se, to include all the resources as it relates to drought. So having updated data on current lake levels, boat launches that are open, public boat launches that are open on our lake, any sort of funding opportunities, any sort of work that is being done as it relates to the drought. So again, we currently have these on our Water Resources website now. But we here at your Lake County Water Resources are in the process of developing a landing page, so folks can have access to that. And of course, having segues into your specific water purveyors, there's a lot of work being done by our local water purveyors and other groups around the county as it relates to drought. So just having a one, one area where folks can get to and see any information or updates as it relates to our current drought conditions. So this RCAC is a low-interest loan that folks can apply for, to whether it be construct, refurbish, or replace individual water well systems. Then you have the California Department of Water Resources, my dry well reporting. That is where folks are able to report if their well is dry. If that is difficult for you to navigate, or if you have questions on that, you are more than welcome to give us a call here at Water Resources, and we can help you submit that dry well report. You can also go ahead and give us a call if you don't want to support that, your dry well in the DWR portal. You can give us a call, and we are also keeping tabs of that internally as well. And then here at the Lake County Water Resources Department, we also have a groundwater well monitoring interest form. If you're interested in us adding your well to our buy-in well runs that we do twice a year, you can go ahead and fill out this form, and we would see if that would be possible for us to add your monitoring well to our monitoring collection system. So again, all these resources are on our Water Resources website, which you can find here at lakecountyca.gov. And then you can go on Lake County Water Resources. You can come visit us on the third floor of the Lake County Courthouse. Give us a call at 707-263-2344, or send us an email at water/resources@lakecountyca.gov. And then, of course, I also have the email, the website links to our friends from the California Department of Water Resources, their drought landing page, and then also our friends at the California Water Boards. So that is what I have right now for my update, and I will go ahead and pass it over to the Board of Supervisors for any questions or comments or additional input.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions from the Board, or Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I don't know if this is something that we can do today, or if we need to bring it back. And I'm not going to turn around, but I'm kind of looking at the folks behind me. We created the Drought Management Plan Task Force to be able to kind of figure out what is a holistic Lake County plan, what do we expect from our schools, what do we expect from our golf courses, what do we expect from all the different types of users, agriculture included, so that we can have a plan when we reach a certain point in a drought, that everybody can take part in. I'd like to know if we can direct that we align that committee with SB 552, because it was kind of created prior to SB 552 giving us that direction, or if we need to come back with a future agenda, maybe on next week, or as soon as possible, to be able to update what the goals are for that committee, so that it is aligned with the state requirements. Just wanted to put that out there.
So that committee, at this point, is an internal committee. So then, would that composition change and be public? Because we had intended to look at our own procedures first, and our own policies. So how would that change?
And maybe that's where it needs to just be a new agenda, because we are required by the state to have that committee. And so we, I know in speaking with Deputy Director Marina, that it fits. It's just maybe not exactly what it should be. And I want to make sure we meet the requirements of the state, and so maybe review again what it is that we're doing.
Yeah. And I am in agreement with that. Supervisor Scott and I were asked how agriculture can participate. And that was kind of where we were stuck, because we weren't quite sure where the public can show up for these meetings. And so if we can adjust that committee, we've only just gotten started, so it's not that difficult. I'd be in favor of that.
Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My office can provide some information with regard to the legal requirements on this. As far as today's item, as Supervisor Sabatier notes, this is a presentation-only item, so it would be better if you put it over for the next agenda with whatever type of action you might be considering. As you know, the point of the agenda is to tell the public what might be considered on any given board day.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to add two comments. And Deputy Director Del Giannis, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I wanted to make sure that the public was aware that right now, our dam over in the South Lake area is not open. Yolo County is not taking more water than what fish and wildlife requires us to allow to trickle down, so that there's no fish die-off further down the creek. And until it reaches a specific Rumsey level, which does not look at this moment in time that it will, that Yolo County Flood Control will not be utilizing the water from our lake for agricultural purposes at this moment in time. And I believe it might be 3.22 Rumsey that it has to reach in order for them to have access. But it's in the Solano decree that states exactly when they legally have the right to use our lake water. Wanted to make that statement. And also, that there is work being done continuously over in our Water Resources Department to look at extending our ramps. I know that we brought that up a while ago. I know the topographical maps have been worked on for the ramps that have not been fixed or taken care of, and so that work continues as well. And I know that's something that's important to us, important to the tourism, and important just overall to Lake County.
Right. Right now, it's at .50 today. Last year was at 1.11 today, last year, and it was at 4.57 in 2020, and 9.46 in 2019 during this timeframe. So just wanted to highlight that. Yeah. Anything else from the Board? I'll open it up for public input. You can come up in however three minutes.
John Moss, I would like to know, we are under a severe drought. That's what she said. And how can we allow development such as commercial marijuana? And why did we allow vineyards when the water use would increase? Water use for commercial marijuana development would increase the use of water. On the one hand, we have severe drought. That's a situation. On the other hand, we're allowing development that uses more water. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Just to go off of that, so we are in constant communication. Again, that is the importance of having these drought work groups and having this active dialogue with our friends, not only in the, with the state level, but also with the county as well. So we do have participation from our friends at the Lake County Environmental Health, and then also Community Development Department. And these are conversations that we are having.
Thank you very much for that insight.
Bobby Dutcher, Lakeport, water storage is going to be very important. And so, you know, Yolo County won't get any of the water from Clear Lake this year, but they still get water out of Indian Valley Reservoir. It's about the only way those farms can operate. But Indian Valley, I was up there Saturday, is really, really low. So one more drought. If they drain Indian Valley completely, we have another drought. I don't know what those farmers are going to do. But even for firefighting purposes, reservoirs like Indian Valley and Lake Pillsbury are extremely important. So we're only about three weeks away from an environmental group filing a lawsuit to dismantle the dam. It's Scott Dam and losing Lake Pillsbury. It's a critical source for water storage, for a lot of reasons, for the environment, for firefighting. So we really need to do something to protect that. Billions of gallons of water storage are about to disappear from Lake County if we don't do something to stick up for Lake Pillsbury. So early April, I think, is when they're going to file a lawsuit. So it's really important that we pay attention to that. We're not getting much, you know, from the chambers standpoint, we're not getting much feedback from our state representatives. They seem to be our best bet. It's, the lake is in a district, it's in John Garamendi's district right now. But the new district's, the way they've been aligned, it'll become Mike Thompson's. So it's just kind of a forgotten orphan right now. It's kind of in a transition between those two congressmen, and they've got a lot on their plate with everything else. But at the state level, I think that's one way we really need to start, at least try to get one of our state representatives to do something, have the state take over that lake, so we don't lose that water storage. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
Just want to say, discussions have already been had, and will continue to be had with Congressman Thompson. And you're right, that after the election in November is when he will officially take on that part of the district. But conversations are occurring.
All right. Is there any other Republican put inside the chambers? I don't see any. And so I am looking at the attendees on Zoom, and I don't see any. And so I need to move to item B on this, right? Or was that all-encompassing? Updates from drought-related meeting groups, including the Comprehensive Drought Work Group? Was that all, that was all included, right?
Yeah, just not the tree mortality. I can speak to that.
Okay. You want to speak to that?
Yeah. So the Risk Reduction Authority, I think it was in February, convened the Tree Mortality Task Force, which has PG&E, and Public Works, and CAL FIRE, and most recently, CAL Trans has agreed to also join. And that is to focus on the priorities of hardening the communities where the tree mortality is happening, and the roadways. Hopefully, we can get to the roadways. That's really difficult for us right now, because we don't have the capacity in our county to start clearing dead trees out of the easements. So that is something that happened after the valley fire, and that was with FEMA support. So we're trying to figure out, you know, how to move through that. PG&E has been really helpful. They've really stepped up to the plate. They've redesigned their program, so that now they'll be hauling the wood off instead of just leaving it. And that was, that's huge. That's huge. And they're doing that countywide. So they're coming to that group and reporting where they are with their additional survey, when the work is starting. And so I'm really hoping that that's going to continue with CAL Trans, too. So they're, they're doing some vegetation work in our county, but they don't really have any plans to come back for two more years. So getting them to those meetings is crucial right now, so that we don't have to wait several years for them to get to work on their easements here. And also, we have Clerk, and I think that's it, that's coming to those meetings pretty regularly. So we'll be sending our next meeting soon. It is open to the public. It is a committee of the Risk Reduction Authority. So if anyone's interested in that work, Risk Reduction Authority, we're having our meeting on Monday. And then we'll likely announce the next meeting for the tree mortality. But if anybody missed the town hall, say it again, it was great. And it is recorded on our And it is recorded on our county Facebook page and our county YouTube channel.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah. First off, good job on that tree mortality meeting that you had. I know it's very visible to everybody just driving into Lake County, driving through Lake County, Highway 29, there's just a big brown patch of trees. They don't become green during the summertime or springtime. They just remain brown. So obviously there's a lot of decay and death happening in our trees throughout. I just want to remind Supervisor Piska that RC, sorry, yeah, RC, RC, don't know when the date is that their biomass facility will go in, but I think that's definitely something to try and link in and see if we can be one of the people that can provide that type of biomass to them. Because it's not just about the tree mortality, it's what do we do with them? There are even trees that have fallen at one point. There's a lot still left around in our communities. And so hopefully that can happen sooner than later, but without the biomass facilities, it just becomes very difficult to, what can be done? There's definitely possibilities, but that one is very helpful.
Yeah. And there is, the biomass project that the Scotts Valley Band of Pomos is looking at repositioning that project, another place in the county so that it can be used immediately.
Thank you for that. Any other insight on that? I should open public input for this since we brought up another subject about tree mortality. So I'll go ahead and open it up for anyone in the public that wants to speak on tree mortality. All right. Not seeing anyone in the chambers or on Zoom. Bring it back to the board to close this item and appreciate your report and your presentation, Deputy Director Del Giannis. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, board.